We have an invocation by Councilman Fred Shanks and our pledge of allegiance to the flag. We ask everyone, please stand.
Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you provide each of us in our community. Thank you for watching over another successful national night out, and thank you for those who ensured its success this past Tuesday. We pray that you watch over our neighborhoods and our citizens and keep them safe. We ask that you watch over those who protect us each and every day. Please give us your wisdom and guidance tonight to make decisions for our community that are aligned with your will. Open our ears so that we may hear your voice. Open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom. Open our spirits so that we may know your leading and guidance. Open our hearts so that we may receive your heavenly love. We pray all this in your heavenly name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I've asked Dr. Jones, today was our first day of school opening in our city, and I've asked Dr. Jones and Ann Sparks to come forward and give us an update on how things went, and also want to recognize our school board member Taquan Graves is here. So, Dr. Jones and Ann, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Well, you know, I'm fond of saying we're the only business in town that has a grand reopening every year, and I'm extremely proud to report that this was the grandest of reopenings in many ways, beginning with Woodrow Wilson. That school was built in 1926 to serve a particular purpose, and today that school began re-fulfilling that purpose when it reopened its doors. It's, I can't describe, I can't think of the language, maybe Ann can help me out. I can't think of the words to describe the synergy, the optimism, and again, Woodrow Wilson is just an example of what we saw the entire day. So, it was a phenomenal day. I want to do, I do want to commend the mayor, I know he had nothing to do with the quality of the aesthetics in our schools. I know he had nothing to do with that, but let me just say, there wasn't a, there wasn't a corner with dirt in it in our schools. Phenomenal day. I'm kind of out of words. We started our morning at 7:00 a.m. at the two middle schools, and then we went to Wilson, and of course we went to Woodbury and Geely Johnson, and the difference in those schools because of the smaller enrollment and because of the focus on kids K3 and the 115 ratio, again, it's something I can't describe. Do you have anything you want to add? It's been a phenomenal day for us.
Just very briefly, we would both, on behalf of the division, really like to say thank you so much to our police department. Their presence today in all of the schools and on the school buses really, I think, set the tone for the day, and if you're on social media, I ask that you go and look at the videos of Mark Aaron on the bus, the police officers shaking hands and welcoming all of our students. It really, really went a long way, and so we are very, very appreciative for that. So, thank you.
Yeah, often when we, when we see police in schools, we think of a problem. We should think of it as progress in our community. I mean, just, again, the relationship there. Police, imagine police officers escorting children to school and it's completely organic or to class. A child doesn't know where to go, police officer says, "Can I help you, young man?", and escorts them. That's the kind of thing we saw occur today. And let me just, let me end on this. You know, we know that, I know that I probably have a reputation of always asking for more. I feel like the commercials sometimes, "I want more." More makes a difference, and we saw that today. So, I want to thank City Council for your support, our most important citizens, the children of Danville Public Schools.
Well, thank you all so much for taking out your time to come here. Several of us was at the schools this morning. We tried to stay away from the cameras. We were with the ministerial lines at George Washington High School and Bonner. You're absolutely right. It was just an amazing day. So many wonderful things happened, and just want to thank you all for all you do. Any questions for Vice Mayor?
No questions, just real quick this morning to say, Ann and Dr. Jones, thank you both for coming here tonight, and Ann, I look forward to a fantastic school year. The mayor actually took me last week to a tour of Woodrow. As I said, as it was coming together, got to meet a lot of the teachers and the staff there, and what a phenomenal, phenomenal job. It had been, you know, a handful of years since I'd been in there, and I felt like I was walking into a brand-new school, but a brand-new school that had a lot of wonderful history with it also, and that combination was really unique and special, and I'm sure it's going to be a great year for the students. And as you mentioned with the police officers today, I mean, that is tremendous. I know something the mayor talks a lot about since he's become mayor is those partnerships, and as I watched the videos and things today, I saw a number of examples of those Danville partnerships, and it's a wonderful thing to see. So, I thank you both for what you do and looking forward to a wonderful school year. Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah, I just, all of us are glad to see Woodrow Wilson back open. It was an award-winning school. I don't know, you know, sometimes you, I guess you learn from your mistakes, but you know, we questioned that, several council members questioned, you know, "You're going to overcrowd your other schools?", and we were told, "No, it won't be", but it turned out it was. And this, you know, teachers can only teach so many children. You can't teach thirty or thirty-five children, it's just impossible. And so, we really appreciate this school reopening with a new attitude from the superintendent and the school board. And again, the council is right behind you because we know that the success of this city, for economic development, to reduce crime, to make it a better city, is all dependent on the school system. Without it, everything else falls. So, that's why we were so unanimously voted to increase pay raises for the teachers, and we're behind you. Thank you.
May I just add one other question to that? We know that we have a national teacher shortage. I'm proud to report that our staffing is at about ninety-seven percent. Just to make that practical, there's one vacancy at G W.
Also, we know, Dr. Jones and Ann, there's an open house at Grove Park. We know you have to leave, but thank you for taking out time to be with us this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Communications from the visitors. Madam Clerk, will you share the rules, please?
Citizens who desire to speak and Matt is not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. Citizens will have five minutes to speak.
Anyone wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, please come forward now. State your name, your address.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and Vice Mayor and Councilmen, Councilwomen. I'm Sandy Williams, and I live at 679 Glendale Avenue, and I've come tonight to share a problem that I've not been able to get a satisfactory solution to. And this problem has, I've tried a couple of times by speaking with the supervisor of the sanitation department, Kyle Prescott. The issue is a trash truck number 602 that has a split in the front. It leaks, and it's dumping raw sewage in front of my house, and not my house only, but other houses on Glendale Avenue and the surrounding areas. Mr. Prescott tells me that he has made work orders, but nothing has been done so far, and he also told me that all the city trucks leak, but 602 is worse, and it's the one that dumps in front of my house. But I'm not here just to speak about my house, although I would love to show you this picture, if it's okay. Could I bring it up?
Sure.
This is my house in the spirit. The other pictures are other houses on the roof.
Thank you, I'll pass it around to council members.
We own our home and we take pride in it, and we try to keep it fixed up, we try to keep our yard nice, but this is not only unsightly, it's an unhealthy health issue. And when you track through this stuff and take it back into your home, you've got all this raw sewage stuff on your carpets and in your home, it's just not acceptable. Mr. Prescott says that it could be welded, this truck could be welded, and I don't know how much tax money we have for keeping up the maintenance of our city vehicles, but I know we pay sixteen fifty a month for this service, and we all pay our taxes. So, I'm just, I'm bringing it before you guys because, like you already said tonight, you care about this city. You care about Danville. We want businesses to come here, we want people to move here, we want jobs for people, but if they find out our city can't even keep the streets clean and have sewage being dumped out by trucks they know about, I don't think we're going to get that. So, I'm hoping this is the last place I have to bring this issue to, that I will hear from you guys and I will hear of a solution, of something that's been done and it's been taken care of. I think it'd be easier to fix the truck than to keep sending somebody out to clean up the mess. Now, Mr. Prescott did send the flusher truck this last time. It happened Tuesday morning. Again, this is like the fourth time, and he sent the flusher truck out. And that's not a solution. That just washed this stuff down in front of other people's houses, elderly people who don't know who to call or what to do about what, you know, they don't even know what it is. So, I'm just standing up for other people too, not just myself, but thank you for your time, and I know there was a lot more I wanted to say, but I think I shared most of it with you, and I appreciate your time.
Ms. Williams, thank you so much for coming and sharing with your story. These two young men to my right and to your left, I call them young men, when I asked you for your name and your address, they were writing it down. This is Ken Larkin, our city manager and deputy city manager. I'm sure when I ask you for your name and address, they will be contacting you.
Okay.
Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
I did go down there after I'd gotten one of those messages and looked at it, and I was looking for something different than raw sewage, like you said, if that's what it was. And then I realized they were, they did send out the, I guess, a flusher truck once or twice, but I just, okay, well then, I'll be glad to make sure we take a look at that too. I tried to see if I, I couldn't find it when I went down.
Well, I know you own a lot of houses up and down that street and in that area, and I called to let you know, but I didn't get a call back, but Mr. Prescott came about the third time it happened, and he sprinkled little pellets all over the wet area, and it smelled okay at first, but then they absorbed the moisture and they became an orange cakey mess that was tracked back into the house, and I had to call, and he sent the street sweeper, but the brushes don't get deep enough into the cracks and crevices. I had to get out there again with the push broom and buckets of water and my bottle of awesome and scrub it again, and I shouldn't have to clean up after the city.
Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Sandy, I just want to say thank you for coming down and sharing this with us, and as you said, I mean, you're an example of a good citizen, and someone who came down, and not to yell and complain, but to share concern, and just wanted something taken care of that should be done, and as the mayor said, I know that the city manager, they're going to be looking at this, and I will, as I'm sure the mayor and all the council will, stay on it and make sure that this is addressed to a satisfactory conclusion for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Tom.
Yeah, I just want to say, as a citizen of the city and as a customer, you deserve better service than that, and we'll work hard to get this fixed for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much again for coming down, and I think you've heard from the council members. Anyone else would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please come forward now, please. State your name and your address.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Jones, City Manager Larkin, Deputy City Manager Earl Reynolds. I want to wholeheartedly say with a direct message to you, Mayor, that we're honored to have the Chief of Police and his staff from the Danville Police Department to come and help us out on today. It was an amazing experience throughout the whole district. Our district looks good, our schools look good, our culture is changing, the people's mindset is changing, and I can't be more prouder, coming in as a school board member, to say these few things. I talked to Chief Booth a little bit today through our visits. We went to twelve schools out of fourteen. So, Dr. Jones had me on a roll today, and I've learned my lesson to never go with him anywhere else because he's draining me out, but I must say that every building that I walked in today was nothing less than amazing. You know, and we've been stuck on the mindset, and our motto has been, "Every child, every day, in every classroom." And I've been, I've been saying it so much today, you know, that I actually lost track of what I've been saying, but the message has been so clear to every single person. And I talked to Dr. Jones on the way from school to school, and what he did say and what we agreed on is, we have to continue to do what we're doing. If we stop, we go down. If we continue to keep on, we're going to keep growing. And I've seen growth from the time I started on July the first until school has started today, and I've say, day in and day out, that this thing is rolling, and we're looking really, really good. In closing, we went around and they were going over the rules, and coming in today, I thought about all the rules that I heard today in every class that I went in, and it still fits with our motto, you know, "Respect it, responsible, and ready to learn." And if we follow that motto, we'll continue to grow. You know, the children were excited to go to school today. We went to Woodrow Wilson. When we got to school at 8:18 this morning, it was a line all the way down that side road. That's amazing. When those doors opened at 8:30, students stormed the doors of Woodrow Wilson with nothing less than excitement. That's what we want from our students here in this city. We want kids that are excited about learning, that's ready to learn, that's engaged, hands-on. That's what we need in Danville. We have a great city. I don't care what nobody has to say about this city. I will come right here and say every chance I get that we have a great city, we have a great school system, and we have great leadership. And if I'm ready to argue with anybody that has anything different to say about it, here's my chance and my platform to speak, but you can tell the excitement that I have for this school system. And we're growing, we're under great leadership, and I tell this to Dr. Jones every single day, that he's an amazing leader. We can't beat it. We have the best. We want the best, and we're going to keep the best. We have the best teachers, we have the best custodians, we have the best nurses in the district. No argument. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. I just want you to know that you started a little bit late this morning. You started 8:18.
No.
You're about an hour late.
No, we, no. We started about six o'clock, about seven o'clock.
You were still thirty minutes late.
Yeah. You know what? We was a few minutes late, but we were all excited.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
And listen, I'm still, I got a minute and twenty-six seconds. Let's start the timer because I'm ready to use that too. I'm jacked up. I'm telling you, I'm excited because the students are excited, the teachers are happy. I met Ms. Larkin today, and she said that she was kind of groovy. I had to agree with her on that, but I'm telling you, I'm jacked up about it, and I thank you so much, City Council, for your partnership. I know you don't get this often, but I wholeheartedly, as a school board member and as a citizen of Danville, thank you for everything that you do, day in and day out.
I just made myself a note to wake you up at 4:30 in the morning.
Look, you won't get an answer.
Thank you so much again for being here tonight. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor.
I know the answer, but for those who may not know, Taquan, how old are you?
I'm nineteen, I'll turn twenty August thirtieth, so I have a birthday coming up.
I tell people all the time how excited I am about the future of this city and about how bright our future is, and there's a shining example of it right there. You know, people, I was a young man when I got elected to council, but I was twenty-four. When I was nineteen, I was in a punk rock band. You're on the school board. I mean, that's amazing.
Let me say, let me say this, I'm ready, I'm ready to say it. Let me say this. I have heard everything under the sun. You know, I've been discouraged, I've been talked about, and everything under the sun, but I'm still standing here today, and let me tell you the reason why I'm standing here today. For the kids that we serve in Danville Public Schools.
Amen.
That's right, that's right.
Nothing, nothing is about me. The stuff, the return that I get from seeing students succeed and teachers happy is nothing greater. None of this is about me. This is about the students that I serve. I love them, I love our system, that's why I do what I do. We went to Bonner today, and everybody in this building knows that I love Bonner Middle School. Hands down, I worked there two years, and I love everybody in the building. Today was very hard for me, leaving those students, but now I get around and make an impact on the whole district. It has been amazing.
I see your time is up. You can finish this when I wake you up at four o'clock in the morning.
You know what?
Thank you, sir.
We're going to talk about spending this time.
One of the best parts about this is to be sitting here and looking out in the audience and seeing the audience's support, but to see Delegate Danny Marshall, who just gave us a wonderful presentation at the Institute on Safety of Our Schools, and see the smiles on his face. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'll talk to you about 3:59 a.m.
It must be an afternoon.
Anyone else wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, may feel free to come forward now? I close the public hearing. Consent agenda, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Saunders.
I'm, may I move the approval, item A through B.
Is there a second? Councilman Campbell. Madam Clerk, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomah?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
New business, item A, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance for Comprehensive Service Act funds. Motion, please. Councilman Campbell.
I'm, may I move to adopt an order to amend the fiscal year 2019 budget appropriation ordinance by appropriating Comprehensive Service Act funds and providing local matching funds for a total of $4,747,214. First reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Buckner. First reading. Item B, consideration of approval to rezone from NC Neighborhood Commercial to Conditional HRC Highway Retail Commercial District at 5011 Riverside Drive. I open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this agenda item, please come forward now. I close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance rezoning from NC Neighborhood Commercial to Conditional HRC Highway Retail Commercial District at 5011 Riverside Drive, otherwise known as Grid 9712, Block 005, Parcel 000046 of the City of Danville zoning district map.
Is there a second? Councilman Tom. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomah?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Item C, consideration of rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to LED1 Light Economic Development District Parcel ID numbers 78315 and 75881. I open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, members of council, I thank you for letting me be here today, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about C. There are two warehouses that my father built last century, a long time ago. They were leased to Dan River, and Dan River, of course, is no longer with us. So, what we have done is we've subdivided those two warehouses. One of the warehouses is now a manufacturing facility that supplies, so a company came from out of town, employed about twenty people, and they are supplying to Goodyear and other rubber companies. So, we have another warehouse that we are trying to find someone to fill that 110,000 square feet, so we need a parking space. And so, what this does will allow a suburban residential to be rezoned to light economic LED, I think is the way it's mentioned here, for a parking lot so that we can bring some additional jobs into the City of Danville.
Thank you so much. Discussion of the motion? Any discussion? Any questions?
Need to ask if anybody else is...
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this matter, this agenda item? Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item? I close the agenda. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman, Vice Mayor Bogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to LEDI Light Economic Development District Parcel IDs numbers 78315 and 75881, otherwise known as Grid 2505, Block 001, Parcel IDs 0000011 and 0008 of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Miller. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomah?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Item D, consideration of rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to HRC Highway Retail Commercial District Parcel ID 60407. I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item, please come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item. I close the public hearing. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I motion that we approve an ordinance rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to HRC Highway Retail Commercial District Parcel ID 60407, 3.2 acres on Terry Avenue, otherwise known as Grid 2913, Block 001, Parcel 000001 of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Saunders. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Tomah?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Item E, consideration of rezoning from OTR Old Town Residential to Conditional TOC Transitional Office District, 711 Jefferson Street. I open the public hearing.
Good evening. I'm Alfreda Bennett. I'm the visionary for President Health Ministries, and I am here to answer any questions you may have about what we want to do. This property joins 717 Jefferson that we got the rezoning on early this year, I think, and the purpose of the building, what we've done, we want to use it, we call it the schoolhouse, and what we do, we do after-school tutoring, adult education, but by us covering Pennsylvania County, Halifax County, the Overfull Caswell, and the City of Danville, when the children come to us from different school districts, we will reach out to their schools to get their lessons, and we have four volunteer teachers, Mrs. Cruz is one of them, and they will educate them during school hours now. I want you all to give us this because they gotta go to school. They won't be permitted to sit all day, because this is in the Home for the Homeless Women, to sit and play computer games and watch TV and do that. They gotta get their education. Even if they are suspended from school, our teachers are committed to them coming to their schoolhouse, that's what we call it, to get their education. They, they, I'm like the young man on the school board now. I mean, serious, if we don't stay behind our children and push them, because when they get to us, Mayor Jones, by the time a child gets to us and they're homeless, they've been through a whole lot, and I've learned a lot from our teachers because they say that they have found that children do better when they've got one-on-one. And so, we want the zoning, we've, we've put the cart before the horse, kind of sort of, and I have reached out to the school board and to do adult education before I realized I needed to get the zoning. And so, and so they permitted it, and Mrs. Towns comes and does that, and matter of fact, we've got the second session going there, but I want to share this testimony because we've had our first graduate, and I thank you for coming, and I can't go into And I, I can't go into detail on his history, but he was going down the wrong road, and he wanted his education, so he could get, he wanted the GED, so he could go into the military. And he is part of Hoop Don't Shoot, and we went up to Green Street Park to sign him up, to register him to come to adult ed, and he was waiting for Ms. Dixon, and it seemed like it was taking her so long. He sent a text saying, "GED, GED, GED," and we went and got him in GED, and he was our first graduate. So, I, I'm honored. I, I gotta tell you this, I gotta go in and tell you. What blesses me so much is because our location, it's, it, they're in areas that most people don't like to go to during the day, more or less to come at night. So, I, I just, I like what the Lord is doing. I, I just like it. So, and I need y'all's approval, so we can keep doing what He tells us to do. And I'm gonna answer your questions.
Public hearing is still open. Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item?
I just appreciate what you're doing, and you are really touching a lot of people in the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just, I just want to say, God bless you. Thank you for what you're doing. And as you said, the, the education of our young people was extremely important to the future of our city and our region, and, and all of our children deserve the equal opportunity of a great education, no matter where they live, no matter where they come from, no matter who they are, they should have that ability and opportunity. And so, anyone who wants to help in that effort, I always support them. Thank you so much.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, it's just wonderful to see your enthusiasm, and, and, I mean, so many people in the past have been down on the City of Danville, and, you know, just don't do anything and say it's a lost cause. And then we get people like you that, that are just, just ecstatic and enthusiastic for teaching children and making this a better place. So, thank you.
I was at, I, I did attend your event, and I don't know if council, if you get a chance to go by and see what she's done there, upstairs, downstairs, and, um, I didn't get a chance to eat none of the food, but my, I, I really wanted some really bad. But what you're doing is absolutely amazing. You left out some wonderful things that you're doing there with the sleepovers and the things, the different rooms, and how the different rooms are set up, but it is truly amazing. I grew up in that community, and I'm still in awe from the visit that I made. The young man is on his way to military, I heard the other day. One of the other young men is on his way to, uh, military, I think he had to be out of GED for six months, and, um, that is just amazing what you're doing. So, thank you, keep doing what you're doing, and I'll be by soon when I think dinner's being prepared again. Councilman Saunders?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I also agree. Thank you so much for improving our city, for helping our people. Also, special thanks to Ms. Cruz, better known as Gabby. Thank for all of you doing it as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is still open. Anyone like to speak? Anyone else would like to speak on the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I close the public hearing. Council, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance rezoning from OTR, Old Town Residential to Conditional TOC Transitional Office Commercial, seven one one Jefferson Street, otherwise known as grid two seven one seven, block zero two three, parcel zero 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 four of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Shanks. Discussion of the motion? Councilman Saunders?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion, of course, no question about that. But to the attorney, uh, if you look at, uh, he as the mayor read it, it talks about Transitional Office District. Look at the motion, is there Transitional Office Commercial? One says district, one says commercial. Is that gonna be a problem?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Saunders. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Item F, consideration of granting a special use permit at seven eleven Jefferson Street for a community facility. Uh, open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this item agenda? Anyone who would like to speak on this item agenda? Close the public hea- did you want to speak?
No.
Okay.
Just saying.
I close the public hearing. Councilman, Councilman Campbell?
This is Mayor, move for adopted orders granting a special use permit for the community facility in accordance with the article three-point-one, section C, item four, of the code of City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six, as amended at seven eleven Jefferson Street, otherwise known as grid twenty-seven seventeen, block zero two three, parcel zero 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 four of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Saunders. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Jones? Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Item D, consideration of rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to LEDI Light Economic Development District Parcel ID numbers seven eight three one five and seven five eight eight one. I open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, members of council, I thank you for letting me be here today. And I just want to talk to you a little bit about C. Uh, there are two warehouses that my father built last century, a long time ago. Uh, they were leased to Dan River, and Dan River, of course, is no longer with us. So, what we have done is we've subdivided those two warehouses. One of the warehouses is now a manufacturing facility that supplies, uh, certain company came from out of town, employed about twenty people, and they are supplying to Goodyear and other rubber companies. So, we have another warehouse that we are trying to, uh, find someone to fill that, uh, one hundred and ten thousand square feet. So, we need a parking space. And so, what, uh, this does will allow a suburban residential to be rezoned to light economic LED, I think is the way it's mentioned here, for a parking lot, so that we can bring some additional jobs into the City of Danville.
Thank you so much. Discussion of the motion? Any discussion? Any questions?
Need to ask if anybody else is...
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this matter? This agenda item? I close the agenda. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to LEDI Light Economic Development District Parcel ID numbers seven eight three one five and seven five eight eight one, otherwise known as grid two five zero five, block zero zero one, parcel IDs zero 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 one one and zero 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 eight of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Miller. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Dr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Item D, consideration of rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to LEDI Light Economic Development District Parcel ID numbers seven eight three one five and seven five eight eight one, otherwise known as grid two five zero five, block zero zero one, parcel IDs zero 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 one one and zero 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 eight of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map. Second by Councilman Saunders. Discussion of the motion? Councilman Saunders?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion, of course, no question about that. But to the attorney, uh, if you look at, uh, he as the mayor read it, it talks about Transitional Office District. Look at the motion, is there Transitional Office Commercial? One says district, one says commercial. Is that gonna be a problem?
No, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Saunders. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Item F, consideration of granting a special use permit at seven eleven Jefferson Street for a community facility. Uh, open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this item agenda? Anyone who would like to speak on this item agenda? Close the public hea- did you want to speak?
No.
Okay.
Just saying.
I close the public hearing. Councilman, Councilman Campbell?
This is Mayor, move for adopted orders granting a special use permit for the community facility in accordance with the article three-point-one, section C, item four, of the code of City of Danville, Virginia, nineteen eighty-six, as amended at seven eleven Jefferson Street, otherwise known as grid twenty-seven seventeen, block zero two three, parcel zero 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 four of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Saunders. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Item D, consideration of rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to LEDI Light Economic Development District Parcel ID numbers seven eight three one five and seven five eight eight one, otherwise known as grid two five zero five, block zero zero one, parcel IDs zero 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 one one and zero 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 eight of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map. Second by Councilman Saunders. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Item D, consideration of rezoning from SR Suburban Residential to LEDI Light Economic Development District Parcel ID numbers seven eight three one five and seven five eight eight one, otherwise known as grid two five zero five, block zero zero one, parcel IDs zero 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 one one and zero 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 eight of the City of Danville, Virginia zoning district map. Second by Councilman Saunders. Discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Toma?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.